Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for October 2nd, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bevere.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widner.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Mike. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good news for our PD tonight, Chief: two new officers onboard and ready to go.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As usual, when we have our new officers get hired, I like to introduce them to the City Council and also to the community. So, I'd like to introduce Officer Ethan Nowakowski on my right, and Officer Kevin Rinn on my left. And a little bit of background: they just graduated on Friday, the first 14-week class, which was extended by two weeks. So now, Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Bureau, it's a 14-week training program at Suburban Law Enforcement Academy College of DuPage. They're now entering their field training program. Officer Nowakowski was a former firefighter paramedic with the New Lenox Fire Protection District, and he is working on completing his associate's degree at Marin Valley Junior College. Officer Rinn has a bachelor's degree from Aurora University, a master of science in kinesiology from Indiana University, and worked as a work conditioning director prior to seeking his career in law enforcement. I think especially noteworthy is that Officer Rinn was selected and voted on by members of his class, which was confirmed by the staff at Calea. He won the George Graves Award for Leadership, which is a very prestigious award. So, I'd like to welcome them both to the City of Warrenville. I know they're going to have great careers here, and they're going to really enjoy themselves and be an asset to our Police Department. So, welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Okay, we have a couple of proclamations this evening. This one is especially near and dear to my heart. National Walk to School Day. Kate Perkins, our Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, will accept this proclamation. Good evening, Kate. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Proclamation: National Walk to School Day, October 4th, 2017. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in health problems among children, and being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine; whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution; whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to encourage children to be aware of the challenges and dangers that they face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution; whereas community leaders and parents can determine the walkability by completing a walkability checklist; and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to evaluate bicycling and walking conditions in their communities, and we certainly have here. Thanks to you, Kate. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, in recognition of this important event, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 4th, 2017 as National Walk to School Today, and I will be there on my bike at Johnson School for sure. Or no, I'm at Bauer this year. I don't know, I'm at one or the other.
I'll check and get back to you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Do you want to say something?
I do.
By all means, please.
I, of course, wanted to thank the Mayor and the City Council and the city staff for their support of this event, but I've been thinking about this, and I was thinking about it while the Mayor was reading the proclamation, and it's clear that many people deserve thanks for their part in this event. The Police Department deserves thanks because they dedicate resources to extra crossing guards. In addition to the crossing guards, they provide every day for kids that are walking and biking to school. City staff works on this. I saw Justin earlier, but I think he's left. The City Council and the Mayor support us. I certainly appreciate that. The PTA does a lot of hard work to publicize and get this event to happen. Teachers support us. I think Bauer even has a competition, the class that participates the most. And to participate, you don't have to just walk or bike, you could scooter or rollerblade or something else, if we count everything that's not being driven to school in a vehicle. The class that participates the most gets extra recess time as a reward. So there are many people: parents, PTA, school staff, city staff, Police Department, many people that work to make this day happen, and I'd like to thank all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. See you soon.
And one other proclamation this evening: on the National Arts and Humanities Month, whereas the arts and humanities are the embodiment of all things beautiful and entertaining in the world, the enduring record of human achievement; and whereas the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life in Warrenville, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the education of our children; and whereas arts education research shows that the arts help foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of beauty and cross-cultural understanding; and whereas we use the humanities, history, literature, philosophy, to explore what it means to be human; and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique and intrinsically valuable role in the lives of our families, our country, and our state; whereas the month of October has been recognized as the National Arts and Humanities Month by Arts DuPage and thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades, therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Warrenville Arts and Humanities Month, and call upon all citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in DuPage County. And we will mail this to the Council. Next, our agenda is a presentation of the FY 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Sean Hickey of Lauderbach &amp; Amon. Sean, welcome. Please go to the podium and give us the good news.
As the Mayor mentioned, I'm Sean Hickey. I'm from the CPA firm Lauderbach &amp; Amon, and I'm here to present the city's April 30th, 2017 audited financial results. Before I start, I guess I just want to make sure everybody has a copy of the CAFER, the City Council, because I'm just going to present at a high level, and I'm going to refer to some pages within the CAFER. Just as a reminder, the process for the audit really takes a number of months, and we started a few months back, and we work closely with Kevin and his staff. And so I wanted to mention, you know, thanks to them, because without them, we're not able to prepare and complete our audit. So I really appreciate the help of the staff, and everything was, we had full open access to all of the accounting records. So, just to kind of go through the CAFER, again, I'm just going to go through a high level and just kind of point out some of the key things that we think are important to the city and the councilmen to know. The first thing is, if you turn right in the beginning section, in the introductory section, there's, I just want to point out that the city did receive, there is a GFOA certificate, and this is usually a year behind. So in other words, your 2016 GFOA certificate was awarded to you, it's presented in the 2017 CAFER, and then this CAFER will be presented to the GFOA, and we anticipate that you would receive another GFOA certificate, which is a really prestigious certificate from financial Next, I'd like to go to the basic financial statements. And if you could turn to pages 10 and 11 in the basic financial statements, I just really want to point out, this is the activity at a fund level for 2017, and it presents all your governmental funds, and...
For a minute there, I thought you said at a fund level.
Oh, no, yeah, that too, at a fund level.
Well, you're a numbers guy, so...
So here's all your governmental funds. And just a few key things I want to point out is, we total on page 11 the revenues and expenditures, and at the bottom, what you'll notice is that there's a positive number of $75,575. What that means is, for all your governmental funds, your revenues exceeded your expenditures. So that's a positive balance, and that's a, you know, a good thing that we see, is that your revenues exceed your expenditures. One other thing I would like to point out that was significant as part of the audit, and this was approved by the City Council previously, is the Special Projects Fund. You'll notice there's a big transfer from Special Projects to the General Fund, and that was because the city and the council decided to close out that fund and just, in future, record in the General Fund. A few pages after that is your business-type activities, and what I'd like to point out on page 15 is the results of your Water and Sewer Fund. Now here, there was a net change in position at the bottom of $1,109,000, and what that reflects in this situation is that, for the current year, your revenues, or your expenditures exceeded your revenues. But I also like to point out that you do have a $22 million fund balance, so we look at that as your reserve at this point. Next, I'd like to point out, another page is your Police Pension Fund, page 18. And again, comparing your additions to the deductions, basically your revenues over your expenditures, you had an increase of $2 million. And benefits that are restricted to pay future pension expenditures increased to $19 million. After the Pension Fund, I'm not going to go in detail, but there's notes of financial statements that support all the numbers. But a few key things I want to point out, on page 56, page 56, 57, and 58 present some of the detailed information for your pension funds. And on page 56, you'll notice this is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is your regular employees participate. And a couple of key things that I want to point out is that every year you have an actuarial determination of how much you should be contributing to pay those future benefits. And what you'll notice there on page 56 is that for the past couple of years, or past year, actually, you've been contributing excess, $128,000 excess in 2017. And what you're doing there is, you're making sure that you're providing future benefit costs, because of course, the costs keep rising, your pension costs, so you know, that's a good thing that you're trying to catch up on those contributions.
As opposed, as opposed to taking pension holidays that some other organizations do.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
And then, on page 57, the Police Pension Fund, the same thing. There, over the last three years, we present that you have made excess contributions to the Police Pension Fund.
So the bottom line is, we're acting very responsibly and looking forward to future needs and not skipping any responsibilities.
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I'd like to point out, as it relates to pensions, for the IMRF and the Police Pension that you'll find on page 58 and 59, one of the key things that we do look at is, at the bottom of page 58, it's a percent funded. And really, again, this is a long-term look at your pension funds, and you'll notice, as of 2012-2016, your IMRF was 85% funded. And in 2017, your Police Pension on page 59 was 66% funded. And although, you know, most people strive to think, okay, that's going, we want it to be 100%, again, you're in very good shape as compared to some of the other government entities that we see.
And the requirement to be 100% is 2040?
Yes, correct.
Right, so we're well on our way to meet that requirement.
Yes, especially with the additional contributions.
Thank you.
The back information that I'm not going to go through is budget-to-actual information that I know you guys probably review on a monthly basis, so I don't want to go through that. And then, one last thing in total, is that the audit report received an unmodified opinion. And what that means is, it's a clean opinion, the highest opinion, all the information that was presented to us and presented in the report we found to be materially correct.
So we could not have done a better job with this?
Exactly.
Want to say that again?
Yes, exactly.
I'll say it again. We could not have done a better job with this.
Yeah, no, we really do appreciate, again, all the time and effort that's put in by the staff.
As do we. Thank you, Kevin, for you and your staff.
And if there's any questions, certainly, I'd be happy to...
Any questions, anyone? Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. You covered several of the things I was going to ask about, so that's great. I wanted to know, all right, I'm looking at the MDNA page, it mentions that our assets exceed our liabilities by $95 million, that's our net position, and of that amount, about $9 million is our unrestricted net position. So I noticed that that's about 10%. So my question for you is, is that ratio typical? Are we similar to other communities in that respect?
I'm sorry, which page were you looking?
The MDNA page 1.
Oh, page 1.
It's just the comparison between the net position and unrestricted net position. I think that just has to do with what's tied up in capital assets as opposed to what the cash is, but I'm just wondering how that compares to other communities that you audit.
You know, other places that we audit, of course, it varies depending on, and you know, we audit probably over 200 local municipalities in the area. It does really depend on how much is, you know, really going on in the city, like you say. An aspect of net position is how much capital expenditures you have, you know, capital assets that you have on the books. But certainly, from a standpoint of having a positive unrestricted balance, you know, that's certainly something that we see as a positive thing. If, and that's something that we do monitor, and if there was a situation where we saw that going into a deficit, that would be something that we would want to bring as a concern to the Board, to the Council, so...
Okay. It also says down further in the page that our long-term obligations have decreased by about $1 million, and I was, I found that very surprising. I think this is mostly the Police Pension Fund, and I'm wondering if maybe the language here is tripping me up a little bit. Long-term obligations have decreased, or just we've got more saved to pay for those obligations, or a better rate of return on the money? Maybe this is a question for Kevin.
Part of that is, is the compensate at absences, which would be your vacation and your paid-out benefit time, that has gone down recently due to the retirement of some longer-term employees, so that doesn't reflect in here as well. So that's why that number's decreased partially.
Okay, because, I mean, it basically makes it sound like, you know, we don't expect as many people to retire, or something like that.
Yeah, no, it's got to do with the benefits that we won't have to pay out in the future because they've been dealt with already.
Okay. Also in MDNA number 8, page 8, it's talking about the business-type activities, and specifically the Water and Sewer Fund operating expenses. It says, "The operating expenses went up 37% because of the utility extensions." And I'm familiar with the utility extensions, but I was just sort of surprised that that was being called operating expenses. Is that any sort of reflection of what our ongoing maintenance will be? Obviously, we will have ongoing maintenance for the new water extensions, but it's not going to go up by 37% year over year and remain that high.
No, as you recall, that this all has to do with how the EMRP is implemented in the annual cost that will be done from year to year, so there's no reason to anticipate that that would be an annual occurrence.
Okay, so this is just a one-time increase in operating expenses because of, I suppose, capital outlays is what would make more sense to a layperson. Okay, so you talked about that one. Talked about that one. You mentioned page 56 and page 57 of the regular statements where the Municipal Retirement Fund and the Police Pension Fund are listed. There's a note at the bottom that says, "The schedule is intended to show information for 10 years, and additional years' information will be displayed as it becomes available." There's only two years on one and three on the other. Is that because we don't have the data for going back 10 years, or was the requirement to show 10 years something that started recently?
I guess with the implementation of GASB 68, which, for the Police Pension Fund, it was as of April 30th, 2015, and then for fiscal year 2016 for IMRF. So the intention is to build that 10 years, but it was, within the guidance, it was prospective, so that you start and then eventually build up the 10 years.
Okay, because it's just, you know, a note on a page saying there should be 10 years of data when there isn't, it's just a little confusing. Okay, I think the last question is for Kevin as well. In the notes, with the schedule of revenues, budgeted and actual, starting on page 63, you know, there's sort of several pages of charts where there's budget amounts, original and final, and as far as I can tell, none of those vary. It's just the same column in every case for several pages.
Correct.
There's another column for actual amounts, another column for variance, and some of the pages just have original, final, and actual, but I was just wondering why there are, I mean, I suppose this is some accounting standard? It looks funny to have two columns where the original is the final in every case.
Sean, you want to hop in there and help me? I mean, that's there every year, and it only reflect, I guess, we're required to show both columns, and it would only be reflective of a change if there is one. So if there's not a change, yeah, it looks a little strange to have two columns that are exactly the same, but we would reflect a change if there was one.
So just it changed the budget, like a budget amendment adopted by the council is the only thing that would change that?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I think within our format, the way we prepare the report, there is the requirement to show the original and the final budget. If there is no change, there is an option where we would just show one column and classified as original and final. And certainly, Kevin, that's something, you know, we could look to next year, so...
Okay, I mean, I don't think it's important. There may be some cases where having two columns is useful, but I was just sort of looking through it, trying to check and see if there were any differences in what they were, and I don't know, it was...
Yeah, if there were amendments, then for sure, we would definitely, within the funds, have to show the original and final.
Okay, thanks. You know, reading through these audited financial statements is not always a lot of fun. It can be kind of time-consuming, but you guys are doing a great job, so thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Wilson?
I'd just like to make one comment here on the MDNA Managers Discussion and Analysis. One of the notes, the PowerPoint at the very bottom, says, "The city has no general obligation debt." I think that's something we should bring out. All the figures of the rest of the pages look real good, and we got plus where we need pluses and minuses where we need minuses. But I think the fact that all of this has been done without going outside and committing ourselves to any exterior debt, we don't know anyone other than ourselves, and that's a compliment to the taxpayers and to the boards that have existed before. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. It is a good point. We live within our means, we don't spend money we don't have. Sean, any other good things you want to say? Get them out while you can.
Well, I was just thankful the Cubs playoff hasn't started yet, so, otherwise, I would have skipped.
I meant about us.
Oh, about him, yeah. No, it's always a pleasure to have you as a client, and, you know, we definitely appreciate.
Sure. Former Mayor Lund?
Water and Sewer Fund.
Oh, yeah, we need to get her a mic.
Oh, okay. Do you want to?
I have to go there.
We'll bring it to you, Vivian.
On the $1 million and something that the Water and Sewer Fund spent more than they brought in, I'm, I'm pretty sure, but I want to make sure, that that is the planned expended, the planned extension of water and sewer lines, and that caused that, that was planned deficit.
That would be for Kevin.
Am I saying it right?
Yes.
That's absolutely correct. That was a planned deficit.
Yes, and so the $22 million that is in reserve is to finance the rest of the extensions of the sewer and water lines into the rest of our community. There is a 20-year plan, and it was funded. So I think that's another thing that residents need to realize, that, you know, that's just not $22 million, woo-hoo, it's $22 million that's planned to be spent on extensions to the systems.
Right, self-financing our needs is what we're doing. Thank you, Vivian. Sean, I think you can go back to watching sports.
All right.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate the good news, and we're always happy to cooperate with you folks and make sure we do it right.
All right, thank you.
Kevin?
I just want to say that the audit report will be on our website by tomorrow morning, so if anyone is interested in reading it, it is fun reading, despite what everybody else seems to think. It will be on the web, so everybody can see it by tomorrow morning.
Fun is a relative term, isn't it? Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate the fact that you get that up so quickly for folks. Okay, we'll move on to the part of our meeting set aside for citizens' comments. We have several folks signed up this evening. If you would come to the podium, please introduce yourself, give your address, and then speak your piece. That's how we do it. I'm going to take these in the order that I have them in front of me. Harlan Davis, Phil Soleranol, Vivian Lund, and Bob Seibert.
Good evening, everybody. Harlan Davis, I live at 30W020 Lakeview Drive in Warrenville. That's the Summer Lakes Southern Edge. I've lived here for 21 years this month. I moved to the suburbs from Naperville, which I consider Warrenville a great place to live. And when I moved here, my mother kind of did a scouting... And when I moved here, my mother kind of did a scouting around. She now lives at Monarch Landing at age 90 and said, "Boy, you have everything you need right here. You've got dry cleaners, banks, grocery store, hardware store, and a variety of other things." Well, the grocery store has become kind of a fixture in our life. I travel for a living. I'm a pilot for United Airlines, at least for six more months before they throw me out because I'm too old and decrepit. And my wife is a doctorate of nursing practice, which is basically a professor. She does a lot of cooking. She loves doing it. And our little grocery store here has survived. I did a little research on Family Foods, our grocery store here in town. It's the only one. They have a net capitalization of between $1 and $5 million, five to 10 employees. Walgreens, on the other hand, has a capitalization of about $74 billion, that's with a B, and they have approximately 247,000 employees. My wife grew up in northern Minnesota, on the Iron Range, way, way north, where usually they have frost by this time of year. And we've watched big-box stores come into some of those small towns, and every other store shuts down. They all go away. Your choices are therefore limited, and you're stuck with either driving great distances or with not very much of a choice. I really like our little grocery store here in town, and I want it to survive. And it's, nearest I can tell, it's holding on, but not by a lot. We have two purveyors of spirits, beer, wine, et cetera, within approximately three blocks of one another. We have Route 59 Liquors in one of the shopping strip malls just north of the West Suburban Bank. And they've been around for quite a while, privately owned. And we have Family Foods. We add a third liquor license, somebody's going to go out of business. And I don't want to see that happen either to the grocery store, which needs every bit of revenue they get, or to the small privately-owned liquor store. Walgreens is a fine place, but when Walgreens came into town, the pharmacy in Family Foods shut down because they couldn't compete. And I don't want to see this, this place that I've frequented for 21 years shut down because they lose a source of revenue that they can't live without. This has been a hard decision for me to come to this conclusion. I'm all for competition. But if we lose this grocery store, the nearest grocery store is now West Chicago. And after that one, the nearest one is now a significant drive away. And negotiating Route 59 traffic is not very much fun, as all of you know. I don't like it, I don't like it going to work. And I only have to drive a mile and a half on it before I hit the tollway. Then it gets worse. But be that as it may. Therefore, with some reluctance, I request that you vote against the liquor license for Walgreens. I like Walgreens, but I miss the service that I got at the pharmacy at Family Foods. And I don't want Family Foods to disappear. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Harlan. Okay. We'll give you, we'll give you a time to talk, okay? At the end, we have several people. Okay. Phil?
Mayor, council people, I'm sure you recognize me. We've been here for 30 years. And this is our 30th year. And I just thought I'd give you a brief history before I get into the meat of what I had to say. 30 years ago, we came into town, and Warrenville Drugs was a small pharmacy in town. They came next door to Family Foods and went under the name of Hooks Drugs, if you recall that. Then Hooks, as a giant pharmaceutical retailer at that time, went broke. I went and talked to the pharmacist, and the pharmacist felt very good about the Warrenville people following them into our store. So we had to reconfigure our store to accommodate the pharmacy. Now, the first pharmacy that moved into Warrenville was not as significant as the second one. And that created a problem for our pharmacist. In fact, I had dinner with Dennis two weeks ago, and he misses Warrenville very much because he made a lot of personal friends. Family Foods has been more than just a little grocery store in Warrenville. We have participated with every organization that comes to us, whether it be church, schools, police association, firemen. We do our share of contribution with churches and try and do whatever we can because we have been a part of this community for many years. When we came here, we were 110 employees. We've reconfigured ourselves time after time, after Target, after Jewel, after Myers, after all of the competition to the South. And today, if you realize you can't go without seeing what's happening to the retail environment, period, with all the changes that have taken place. So I'm here to say that Walgreens is concerned about competing with C V S, and I'm not sure what C V S they're competing with here in Warrenville. Because as far as I know, there isn't one. Our concerns are, my employees' concerns are, every day doing business in Warrenville and being successful. Every penny is accounted for. And five years ago, we renewed the leases based on the fringe of change. And we've made many changes in the store. And due to our employees, I have employees that have been with me for 20, 25 years. And I work hard for them now because their livelihood is at stake. Every penny that is taken out of our store is one more nail in our coffin. And I just would appreciate it if you'd consider the fact that there are two Walgreens in Warrenville, one Family Foods. And we'd like to stay here. Our employees would like to stay here. We're down to 50 employees. So in that 30 years, our employee has changed by 50%. I know many of you, I see you in the store on a regular basis, and you see me. So we have something. We are part of this community. We're not just another grocery store. If you look at the downtown grocery stores from Chicago West, The Waltz, The Machesney Millers, The Mr. Z's, all these downtown stores kind of disappeared as the fringe giants came about. And it isn't over yet. And we still have a fight on our hands. So I would say, think about what we're doing with this liquor license because it is our bread and butter to survive, and we need every penny we can get. And I appreciate you consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Vivian Lund?
I came to support Family Foods' concern over Walgreens liquor license. I think, you know, Warrenville did not have a grocery store in 1985 when I was first elected. And we didn't have a very good pharmacy. That was when we just had the little rezikas down here. And we didn't have a fast food. We didn't have, there were so many things we didn't have. And because we had had all of that, and then after the train left, then all of that need went away and the business, all those, we had two grocery stores at one time. But when, by the time we got into 85, we didn't have any. And we had to go out of the community to satisfy any of our, our needs. And so when Family Foods made the decision to build in Warrenville, it was, it was a great event and very much welcomed. And it's, it's needed where it is, particularly because it's where so much of our population lives in that area around Family Foods. And we have a lot of residents who do not have transportation, and they're able to walk to Family Foods. And that's the concentration of that particular population. I think we owe a debt of gratitude to a small business who's been a service to our community and has, as, as Phil said, every, every event that occurs in Warrenville, they participate if they're asked. And I know the Fourth of July committee, we would, we would hate it if Family Foods went away because we really rely on them. I think that a community like ours, we need to be, to remember our past and the fact that this grocery store was our one and only grocery store and still is for the Warrenville community. It is the only one we have. And anything that is, detracts from their income, of course, affects their bottom line. So I hope that you will deny the new licenses for Walgreens. And I think maybe because this came up at a committee meeting, and yes, everyone should pay better attention, but I asked Phil if he knew this was going to be discussed at that committee meeting, and he said no. So I don't know, you know, if he should have had some, some notification that this request was being made or not. But I do think that it would be appropriate for the city council to at least remove it from the consent agenda and perhaps give the council a little time to think about these other, other responsibilities to our community and that we need to think about the small business person and make it possible for them to continue to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Bob Seibert?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Just a warning first, the roof may fall in because I agree with Vivian. That hasn't often occurred. Put it on a calendar.
Finally showing some good sense, Bob. Ooh. I said that with a smile.
I'll stay behind, Vivian. The other item with the liquor in Lisle, if you look at the shopping center on Route 53 in Maple Avenue on the southeast corner, years ago, Emmett Malloy, who was a small liquor store that went to some of the different communities, went into that shopping center when it was down. And the city stated that he would be the only liquor store in that shopping center. They would not give a license to anyone else. Walgreens, two years ago, went in and asked for a liquor license, as they have here. Village of Lisle denied it. So I'm just saying, there's presidents out there for doing the right thing. Then tonight, I'd like to tell you that in the last week and a half on public TV, Ken Burns presented 15 hours of research that took 10 years on the Vietnam War. One sad conclusion from the research is that every president, from John Kennedy to Gerald Ford, lied to the citizens about the Vietnam War. A Marine hero who was awarded multiple medals joined the Vietnam Veterans for Peace due to concerns about the war in the direction of government policy. He is quoted as stating, "If a government is going down the wrong path, it is the responsibility of every citizen to stand up for the truth." Just like our previous presidents, the city of Warrenville is lying to the citizens about TIF. It is mathematically and economically impossible for TIF districts to lower property tax bills. Again, it is mathematically and economically impossible for TIF districts to lower property tax. TIF districts only increase property taxes for existing property owners, both in and outside the TIF. One example is TIF II where $750,000 per year of new property taxes were added and occur every year forever.
So you're saying you're back to disagreeing with Vivian again?
No. Vivian and I are agreeing. It's that I'm trying to get you to do something.
Oh, I see. Thank you for the clarification, Bob. John Nordlow?
My name's John Nordlow. Has been stated earlier, shortly after Walgreens opened up years ago across Family Foods, Family Foods Pharmacy closed. Ultra on Route 59 closed not too long ago. And Village Market on Geneva Road in Winfield closed just last month. I'm very concerned. I mean, I love Family Foods. I shop there all the time. I'm just concerned that a liquor license for Walgreens will have a detrimental effect on it. And my position is let Walgreens have their pharmacy, let Family Foods have their liquor department. We need a viable, economically strong, local grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Ruby? Would you like to come up and say something?
Good evening, everybody. And I'm very sorry to barge in just like that. This is like my first meeting that I'm participating, so I just didn't know what to expect or how to address my issue.
Could you give us your last name, please, Ruby?
Kaure, K-A-U-R.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm here to, I heard about the Walgreens, the application about the liquor license, and I'm presenting the Stop On Liquors, which is on 59. So Walgreens is like Stop On Liquors, Walgreens, and then Family Foods. And our business in the past couple of years has been hurt a lot with the other stores' expansion of their liquor line of business. But with Walgreens, it will be, like, it will do the final damage. I could think like it will, like, it might make us like even move away from here. So when you guys, I hate to say like you deny to them, but when you are making determination whether to approve their license, but please consider the other small businesses. Like for us, this is the only line of business we have. But for Walgreens, they have like their pharmacy and then the C store or like, they are the bigger corporation, and they have very many well chances to survive without the liquor license. But for us, this is the only living we have. So please consider, keep us in mind, like, when you are determining whether to give them the license or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Anyone else would like to speak who didn't realize they had to sign up to do so? Pat? You know you have to sign up. Pat, you know you have to sign up.
I sit here, I really do not think I will talk tonight, but what about Target? Okay, Target right here. Okay, I work at Target. I work in Wheaton. Okay. Port now, I really don't care about it. I go to Walgreens, but you know, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Sure, Kate.
I know I should have signed up. I didn't. I'm Kate Perkins. I live on Glen Drive, 3S 111 Glen Drive North here in Warrenville. I also, I came to this meeting to accept the proclamation for Bike and Walk to School Day, but as I've sat here and listened to this and thought about it, I don't want to keep silent. I want to say that I think we should do what we can to support Family Foods. In line with the Bike and Walk to School Day, this is the only grocery store that I can bike to. And I, in fact, a couple of years ago, I bought a small trailer for my bike just so I could ride my bike to Family Foods and buy groceries there. We are a bike-friendly city, as you know, and we're reapplying for that. One of the things that makes us bike-friendly is that we can do our errands on our bikes and shop on our bikes. We don't have to drive everywhere that we go. I guess my family and I could be more organized, but I think we go to Family Foods probably five times a week to shop, and it is indeed very convenient to us. We do sometimes buy food at Target, but the selection does not compare to what we have at Family Foods, and certainly the baked goods don't compare to what we have at Family Foods. I think that Warrenville would be harmed if we lost our own, our local grocery store. And so I support what the others have said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else? Sir?
My name is John Pratcher. I live at 30W 161 Oxford Drive. And I know the procedure. I apologize to you all that I didn't sign up, but I came here to hear what was going on. And after listening to what I've heard, all I would like to have you all consider is that we hear so much about government and big corporations affecting the small guy in America. Family food is a staple in our town. Couple of my kids got jobs when they were teenagers at their store. If we lose them, we're, I've been here since 1977, and I remember when we didn't have a grocery store. Thank God they're here, and I'd hate to see them go. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. One last call. Anyone else?
I disagree with everyone else. I don't think.
Could we have your name, please, and your address?
Melanie McCall. My address, 2 South 070 Waldam Court.
Thank you.
Warrenville. Agree with everyone else about Family Foods. We've got three liquor stores right here. Why, they're not just Family Foods. Like she said, it's also affecting her. These, I don't think these other ones can compete with the prices that Walgreens can get either. The convenience and all of that. There's a lot of accidents in Walgreens. We really don't want more drunk people driving in and out.
Oops.
I just agree. I'd like to see Family Foods stay. I don't want to go to West Chicago after dark. When it gets closer to winter, it's a sort of treacherous road, you know, there's one's got a big curve, one's got a dark alley. I love having Family Foods, a lot of us do. Okay, this was my point. And everyone else said it.
All right, thank you. Okay, is that everyone now? Thank you all for your comments and for your decorum. We appreciate that very much. We'll move on to official staff comments, beginning with the mayor. I have several things this evening. Sadly, I would like to begin with a moment of silence in solidarity with our brothers and sisters in Los Angeles. Another senseless act of violence has been perpetrated on the public.
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas. Los Angeles.
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas. Las, yeah, okay.
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas. Yeah, that's right. The gambling capital of the world. At any rate, it was a horrible scene, and many, many lives will be affected. There are a lot of empty places at dinner tables tonight because of that, and there will be in the future. So if you would join me, please. Thank you. I hope we won't have to do that again soon. Onto some other things. I hope you got your hometown happenings this month. It usually comes out promptly on the first of the month. I just wanted to draw your attention to the resource, which is an insert inside from our Environmental Advisory Commission, which has a lot of good advice and some interesting information on the things that you can do to improve your life, to prevent damage to the environment, and to do things smarter and cheaper. And there was a lot of interesting information about plastic, for one thing, that plastic, did you know that plastic does not biodegrade? That once it's made, we have plastic forever. It never goes away. So be very smart in your use of plastic and recycling because it doesn't go away. But that information and many other things in here, I want to thank the commission for that. They put this out periodically. Very good information for us so that we can act on a micro level to try to improve the lives of our community, other people in our community. So thanks again to the commission for that. We have a public information meeting regarding the potential future bike path project along Mack Road east of Route 59. You may recall that this has been discussed at former meetings. We'd like the public to be able to have the opportunity to come in and understand what's being proposed and what might happen up there. This meeting will be Wednesday, this October 11th coming up, not this week, but next week, at 7:00 PM right here in the council chambers. So if you're interested in learning about that project and our attempt to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists along Mack Road to get from Akim Marsh up to Route 59 and other places, this would be a good meeting for you to attend to get that information. You can go to the city's website if you can't make it to the meeting. Look under Departments, under Community Development, and then to Engineering, and you'll find that information. And if you can't navigate that, call the city and someone will help you do that. But that information is available if you can't make the meeting. Again, October 11th, 7:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. This week, Warrenville Fire Protection District has their Fire Prevention Week Open House. They do this annually. It's a wonderful event, very well attended. These folks do a great job for us, and we're very proud to partner with them. This is Wednesday, October 4th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Fire Station Number One. That would be the one on Batavia Road. Every year, they do a great job of inviting the public in to learn about what they do, see the equipment, bring your kids, have a good time, have some food. And there are some prizes. So it says here, anyway. Fire safety demonstrations also to show how they actually accomplish some of their goals. So Wednesday, October 4th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Fire Station Number One on Batavia Road. And speaking of the Environmental Advisory Commission, they're looking for volunteers to help apply the No Dumping Drains to River markers on local storm drains. This will be an event that will start at 9:00 AM and conclude at noon on Sunday, October 22nd. So if you're available to come and help put those markers on to remind people that they shouldn't pour, use oil, and such things down the drains because those go right into the river and affect the river directly. We're going to meet at the Albright Gazebo, right across the street from City Hall, break into small groups and to work on making that happen. If you have any questions on that, EAC Commissioner Bob Canera at 630-689-6168. Or again, you could call City Hall and get the information, how to talk to Bob. Environmental Advisory Commission, looking for volunteers for Sunday, October 22nd, from 9:00 to noon, to put some markers on those drains to help protect our river. And then finally, Fall Fest with the Park District, another annual event. It's a lot of fun, a family event, a lot of free stuff, costume parades, we judge the kids. Well, we don't judge the kids, we judge their costumes. Can't judge the kids. That's more fair, I think. Lot of fun, a lot of kids show up, a lot of families, plenty of food, inflatables, storyteller and games, music, photo booth, balloon twister, I mean, all kinds of neat small-town stuff, mostly free. It's a great little event, and you don't have to go. And Kate, you can ride your bike, I guarantee you. It's right here at the Park District Center. That's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, Friday, October 27th. So you've got a little time to get that on your calendar. But it's always fun, so do join us for that event. And thank you for the Park District for putting that on. That's all I have this evening. Clerk? All right, Treasurer?
Yes, I just want to let everybody know, as far as our financial report and our budget, that there's a lot of committees and commissions here in Warrenville, many that I've served on, that go over the numbers and the fiscal responsibility, and we really pore through it to make sure that we're not spending money we don't have and that we're providing a good service and a good value for the citizens of Warrenville.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate that. Alderman? Alderman Berry?
I just want to remind everybody that on Sunday evening, October 15th, starting at 6:00 PM, is the Cemetery Walk, which is sponsored by the Warrenville Historical Society. It's always a fun, fun time. Just come on out, bring your kids, and bring your flashlight. So it's a nice walk through the cemetery in the dark.
And learn some history on top of it.
And learn a lot of history.
Yep, very good. Thank you, Claire. Any other Alderman? Alderman Devils?
Thank you, Mayor. The new officers are not here now, but I wanted to talk when they were here, so I'll address my comment to the chief. Chief, I just want to say thank you for the caliber of officers that we are receiving. And each time you talk about them and you talk about the programs, it is apparent that this is quote-unquote a first-class operation. There isn't, there's almost not a week, I feel like this is too loud, there's almost not a week that goes by that in our weekly report, we don't hear about officer training, that they are being sent out on, on all kinds of things, investigations, patrolling, heroin things. They are just, in my mind, are becoming so well-trained. And the last 24 hours for me has been very emotional with the Las Vegas thing. And the stories that are breaking my heart and are the ones of the first responders and the caliber of these people that are sacrificially putting their lives at risk and doing amazing things. And I, I feel like we're right in there, that we're training our officers, and we have such an amazing caliber of people in your department. And I just want to thank you for the training that you're giving them. I'd like to be able to thank all of them in person because anything could happen anywhere nowadays. And I have all the confidence in the world that our first responders, our fire, our police, our EMS people, everybody, is training all the time for this kind of thing. And so I just want to say thank you. I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it so much, and I feel so fortunate to be in a community that is, has the caliber in their first responding units. It's just, I sleep a little bit better at night. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I was stopping in the office to pick up my Alderman's mail, and I had a short conversation with City Clerk Larson, and we were discussing just about how dry the weather conditions had been. And she or I or someone talked to staff, and I guess they got very proactive. And in this week's report, I'm pleased to see that they're watering along Route 56 and that they've also posted helpful watering tips on the city's Facebook page. It is very dry out, and those trees, you know, need our help, so appreciate the city's staff getting out there and taking care of the recently planted trees. Also, as I was driving into Furman Lab, I noticed they had a wildfire danger sign posted. And this is the time of year, I think, people are concerned about their dry leaves and their limbs and so forth. And by the same token, I hope that people are very careful with any burning that they do and follow the guidelines that are in our city's burning ordinance this time of year so that we don't have any unfortunate circumstances and loss of, loss of property or, God forbid, you know, somebody gets hurt. So please be careful with any burning that you do, and I hope we're proactive about that from a city viewpoint, too, because this is the time of year where we will see some backyard fires and bonfires. People like to do that in the fall, but it is dangerous enough right now for Furman Lab to be very concerned about their 7,800 acres that they're protecting over there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, City Administrator?
I have nothing yet tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And City Attorney?
Good evening. My name's Barbara Adams, and I'm pleased to be here as your new city attorney, part of the team that we will be bringing to you from Holland tonight. We're very honored to have been selected. We look forward to working with you and meeting your needs.
Great. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. I would like to make one change to the agenda before we go to approval. If you go to Item 6G, please, and add at the very end of that motion, as it reads, add subject to Attorney Review. So when we approve the agenda, that change will be in there. So Alderman Widener?
Yes, with the exception of Agenda Item A, I'd like to approve the agenda for October 2nd, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Okay, are you removing then Item 6A?
Yes.
Okay, so you're amending the consent agenda to include everything except Item 6A?
Correct.
Okay, so do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the approval of a couple of sets of minutes. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2017 Public Safety and Finance Committee of the whole regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda, as amended for this evening, reads as follows. Item 6B, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation. Wave 2nd Reading and Pass Ordinance 02017-63, authorizing the disposal of city-owned property through an auction conducted by Obenoff Auction Services Incorporated. See, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation. Wave 2nd Reading and Pass Ordinance 02017-64, declaring the 50th Anniversary Birdhouses as surplus property and donate them to local Warrenville elementary schools, the Warrenville Historical Society, and find alternative means to distribute any remaining birdhouses. Excuse me. D, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation. Wave 2nd Reading and Pass Ordinance 02017-65, declaring the wooden tree display units as surplus property and donate them to the Warrenville Historical Society. E, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2017-34, authorizing a lease agreement with Santander Leasing LLC for the current Acorn van through April 2019. F, Accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2017-35, approving the public improvements associated with the C.R. Schmidt Project, reduce the letter of credit, and place the project into the two-year maintenance period. G, Accept Staff Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2017-36, approving the bid for a backup natural gas generator from Steiner Electric Company of Elk Grove Village, Illinois, in the amount of $26,989, subject to Attorney Review. H, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the Purchase of Three 2018 Ford AWD Police Interceptor SUVs through the State of Illinois Contract Number 4018223, and Two 2018 Ford 4x4 Explorers through the State of Illinois Contract TB7063 in the amount of $148,800. in the amount of $148,886. I, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve fiscal 2019 budget preparation and adoption timeline as presented, including the City Council Budget Workshop on Saturday, March 17th, 2018. J, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the 2018 City Council meeting schedule. K, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the 2018 city holiday schedule. L, receive and file the FY 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. M, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting held on August 22nd, 2017. N, receive and file report of invoices paid up to September 27th, 2017, in the amount of $50,598.05. O, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before October 16th, 2017, in the amount Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson, roll call, please.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved as amended. We will return to Item 6A. Alderman Widener, did you wish to bring that forward?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve and accept the Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O217-62, amending the city code Title III, Chapter 2, to increase the number of B1 liquor licenses from three to five and reduce the number of authorized Class B3 liquor licenses from two to zero, parentheses, Walgreens, end of parentheses.
Second by Alderman Berry, discussion? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I have listened to a lot of the concerns tonight and I guess I'm concerned that our long-established businesses are affected, but I also have other concerns. One, we can waive the second reading, but I think for a matter as serious as this and increasing the liquor licenses, one, I would request that we do not waive the second reading, that we have further deliberation on this. And my main reason is, I'm not sure that, given that we have no legal expertise, that we might give them time, Holland and Knight time, to review this license to be certain that is what they would recommend as we move forward. My concern is, too, how many liquor licenses, full-scale liquor license, does a community our size need? I have a concern about that. I'm not sure how many fit in a community of this size. Just because a business requests a business license doesn't necessarily mean that we should automatically grant it. I think something as serious as alcohol distribution, tobacco distribution, drug distribution, we should take very seriously and make sure that it fits well within our community. And those are my, my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. I think the reason it was on the consent agenda was that it came with unanimous approval from the committee and generally, that's what we do, so that's our policy. Had it been more controversial at an earlier level, it would have been for discussion, so. Anyone else? Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I certainly think we should probably spend more time on this. I originally, and I committed me to okay as far as extra liquor license to Walgreens, but seeing the conversations I've had with people and certainly Family Foods has been, I've been here since 1957. And I know when a town hasn't had, you know, our big grocery store used to be Sue Cups. I know for a long time there, we had no grocery store and Family Foods came in here and they've been a loyal, they've been a loyal business here in town. I think we should certainly consider that if that's what gets them to hold on. I'd hate to see the town without a grocery store over there again. So I absolutely think we should spend more time on this and look at the legal aspect and everything else. If we vote for it now, I'm going to vote no. If Walgreens get their liquor license, so whatever you guys want to do, that's my thoughts.
I would ask the Attorney to clarify our ability to either give or deny a liquor license. Are we within our rights to both give this license or not create the license? Please turn on your... There we go. Is that working?
Perfect.
Okay. Liquor licenses are a matter that's within your local control. Your structure is, is a typical structure where you have to increase the number of licenses in a category in order for an additional license to be issued. It is within your discretion to increase or decrease the number of licenses as you feel is appropriate. The standard for review of a decision of that type would be whether there's a rational basis for the City Council to make the decision that you make. And so the court would look at, is this something that there was some reasonable basis that made sense or was, were you nuts? You know, are you crazy? If you're not rational, you know, then that's the other, the flip side. So I think you have, you have good discretion in terms of creating licenses in the different categories.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion? Alderman Davlos?
Thank you. I don't mind taking this off and talking about it a little bit more because I'm a bit conflicted, just thinking of my own experience. I don't think there's anybody up here that wants Franks to go away. I would be devastated if Franks went away. There are things I find at Franks I cannot find anywhere else, things they do that I can't, that nobody else does. You know, Walgreens already has a beer and wine license. They just can't sell hard liquor. I just happen to, I want to buy things, I go to Franks because I think they have more of a selection. They have certainly more than Walgreens would ever have. And I think people shop for liquor, well, not everybody, I guess, but they shop where they're going. So I think a lot of people just buy liquor at Franks because they're there already. So I don't actually, I don't have a sense of what Walgreens would really do because I don't think they're going to have a very large department more than what they already have. So I'm conflicted in that area. I do not, of course, I wouldn't want to do anything that would hurt Franks, but that's for, I need the legal expertise on this because if we, it's hard to face every decision based on, is it going to hurt one individual store over another? Even though I might really like that store and I really want it to stay, I have to understand my role up here. So that's why I wouldn't mind removing it, to get a little more guidance on, on what we can and can't do exactly. But, yeah, thank you.
Well, if the council is so inclined, and I'll let you continue your discussion, just to give you a direction, you could vote for this and then we make the change. If you vote it down, we don't make the change and that would make the opportunity for further discussion if Walgreens wanted to come in. And I would ask, is there a Walgreens representative in the audience this evening that'd like to speak? I do not see one, so we, at least I've given them the opportunity to speak this evening. But if you turn this down tonight, then it's done unless they come back and ask again, at which time you could have further discussion if you're so inclined. So it's entirely up to you whether you pass it tonight or not. You don't need to change the item on the agenda in order to get more discussion. You may not need more discussion. Walgreens may just accept this as, okay, that's fine, and then we're done. So it's entirely up to you. So Alderman Ashauer, I think you'd hand up?
The, last week, we had Walgreens representative here with no one representing Family Foods and this week, it's the opposite, so it's kind of, kind of fair that way. The, I had a different viewpoint last week. I, the, I guess what I have to look at is what's the best value to the community in revenue, jobs, lifestyle, the whole package. Certainly, the value that Family Foods offers is irreplaceable. I mean, we, the, it's a necessity to the community in many ways and I kind of changed my mind. I don't support changing the liquor licenses. The, I think it's a common sense thing. And I look out here tonight and I see people that I see several times a week and you look at them as friends, not just people at the food store. They, and that's not the reason to deny a liquor license, but certainly their existence is because of the value that it offers the community in general. Having three full-service liquor licenses in that small of an area may not be a good fit. Now, whether the other Walgreens would be a good choice just because it's not in close proximity to any other competition, maybe that's something that should be considered. But I don't, I don't support the ordinance the way it's written.
Again, Walgreens would be free to come back with that proposal if they so inclined, if they were so inclined if you did vote this down this evening. Any other discussion? Alderman Berry?
Yes, and last week, I did vote for this, but then I thought about it and several years ago, when Walgreens was in here, I voted no at that time, just because of the fact that there would be three in close proximity to each other and also because I am a fan of Family Foods and I've gone there for many years and they do have, they do have an excellent liquor department now. And I know there's a lot of people who do use it and I would hate to see that they would lose some of that business. So if we have to vote on it tonight, I would vote no.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I voted yes last week, too, and, I mean, most people, I've asked a question all week to certain people. I've had one phone call and I, I saw the paper up at the register and so I started asking questions and most people I talked to would pass up Walgreens or their place and come to Family Foods for their spirits. So, you know, you know, everybody deserves a good chance in town and I changed my mind on this, too. And I, I'd like to talk about it more or just pass it on until they come back and we can fit it in better, decide what's really going. And maybe at some point, it'd be nice to see some data on what the food sales is and what the liquor sales is at these places and say, you know, is it a big thing or not? So that, I would like to see something like that in the future when it comes back.
Okay, Alderman Goodman?
I remember when I was six years old and Family Foods opened. Only, nobody called it Family Foods, it was Franks. I hear all of you calling it Family Foods and I keep having to think, hang on, Franks. I guess I'm just one of those people that, that hasn't yet changed the name of that store in my mind. I talk to other people, you know, go down the corner, go by, turn left at Franks, and people don't know what the heck I'm talking about unless they've lived in Warrenville for as long as I have. But when I was a kid, I remember going to the grand opening and I remember skipping up and down the aisles and memorizing which foods were in which aisle so that the new shoppers who were coming in, I'd say, you know, you're looking for bread, that's aisle four, you know, and I knew, I don't remember it now, and, and some of it has changed, although a lot of it hasn't. But if this was a vote on who likes Franks the best, you know, I would be at the top. I like Franks a lot. I've shopped there effectively my whole life. I don't feel like this is that vote, though. We're being asked about changing the number of liquor licenses. If we have a good reason for, for not changing the number of liquor licenses, if we're making this decision on the basis of how many liquor licenses we should have in town or in an area of town, then I feel like that's a legitimate discussion to have. But as a public official, I think it's very important that anybody who walks in the door of this City Hall gets treated the same as anybody else. And if one store comes up and wants a license and another store comes up and wants a license, that they're treated the same as anybody else would be. So I'm a little bit afraid that we're, we're talking about this as a person X versus person Y decision, and I don't think government should be in that business. If that's the basis on which people are arguing against granting these licenses or against creating these licenses because we just don't want Franks to go out of business, then I can't support that. I don't think that's a just decision. I don't think that would be equitable to everybody equally who comes before our city government. If someone has arguments or reasons or could present information to the council about how many liquor licenses, you know, a given area supports, whether we really have a strong feeling that three liquor licenses in Warrenville is the right number and that any more would be too many, then I'm, I'm interested in hearing that discussion. I'm interested in hearing any of those arguments. I haven't really heard that. I think Alderman Ashauer talked about, you know, possibly the location of the liquor licenses distributed in town and that could be an interesting discussion, whether having three too close together is contrary to our city's best interests. So I guess that's my position, that's where I stand on this issue right now. And if anyone has, has further discussions or further arguments, the way that I vote is going to depend on the question I'm being asked. And if the question I'm being asked is, you know, should we change the number of liquor licenses for Walgreens, just like we change the number of restaurant liquor licenses when new restaurants in town open up? We're asked this exact sort of question a lot. And we don't say, no, Chewie's can't have our liquor licenses because another restaurant in that same part of town has liquor licenses. And so I don't, I don't think that that is the basis on which we can make this decision. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
Well, I've listened to all the other Aldermen speak about this topic and I'm pretty much, I've listened into what they've said and I think what I understood you to say, Mayor, that if we voted this down tonight, we take a vote on it and it fails, then it could always be brought back up again if Walgreens wishes to reapply. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that being the case, I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a recommendation that the, that we accept Public Service and Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O217-62, amend city code Title III, Chapter...
It's already on the table, Alderman.
Okay, then I call the question. I call the vote.
Okay. Clerk? May I have a vote, please? Roll call.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
No.
Alderman Berry?
No.
Alderman Goodman?
Yes.
Alderman Davlos?
Yes.
Alderman Widener?
No.
Alderman Ashauer?
No.
Motion fails. Okay, so we'll see how this works out. My understanding of the reason for a consensus to vote this down was that a concentration of three liquor licenses in such a small area was detrimental to the community. I am particularly fond of Franks myself, but the decision was made based on what's best for the community. And I still call it Franks, I always will, sorry, Phil. I'll never change, your dad was a good guy. Glad you came to Warrenville. Okay, that's done. My compliments to the folks that came tonight to speak. Good job, very respectful of the council and also respectful of the difficulty of making this type of decision and the fact that these folks up here try to make the best decision for the community as well as our businesses. Okay, we have nothing under our regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, no closed session? What if I want one? I don't want one. Adjourn, we need a motion to adjourn. Alderman Widener?
Move we adjourn? Second?
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.